Good evening, everyone. With the time being around 6:00 PM on Thursday, October 27, 2022, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. So, our, the first item on our agenda tonight is the discussion of the superintendent search process. And joining us this evening from the MASC is Mr. Glenn Kuchar and Ms. Tracy Novick. Thank you for joining us tonight.
We're glad to be here. So, we, we've given you some materials. I know we sent some in advance and then we brought you some more and some of it will overlap. It's, in some cases, a little bit of a different arrangement of some of the same materials. But the folder that I just gave you is designed not only to sort of give you the materials that you need, but also to kind of give you a message, which is what I always think of as being perhaps the most important thing for school committees to know when they're facing their, one of the most important things that you do, of course, which is finding a new superintendent, which is that from a Massachusetts state perspective, the only requirements for a school committee in appointing a new superintendent are two things. One, that you actually select and appoint someone who either is licensed or can be licensed. And secondly, that you abide by the open meeting law. So, that's why, what's in here is the 10 purposes for executive session because sometimes we, it's good to be reminded of what parts need to be done in public and what parts need to be done in executive session. And I think that sometimes, because we have seen a lot of processes in particular kinds of ways, committees are under the impression that maybe all of that is written into the Mass General Law or that sort of thing. And I always think it's important for you to know that actually as school committees, as a school committee, you actually have a pretty broad purview when it comes to next steps. So, and interrupt me, by the way, at any point as you have questions. In terms of the choices that are before you, as you, as you sort of look to the future, really, there's sort of two paths you can go down and then one of those paths divides again. You can choose to look within your own organization to see if there is someone who is effectively an obvious next step. And certainly, there are districts across the state every year that feel like they have either a deep bench or an obvious successor, someone who clearly, who it is clear to the committee would be a good next superintendent. And again, that is something that the school committee can choose to do. And what kind of process you choose to take, if that's something that would work for you and is of interest to you, is something else that we can help you with. Because that's, again, something that committees sometimes want to have an outside review of someone, or they want to have an interview with someone, they want to have some sort of a process that gives them a little bit more information before they make that decision. And those are all things that you can choose to do. If that is not something, that is sort of an obvious to all of the committee, next step, you can do a search. And I think that tends to be what most sort of committees immediately are thinking of. That is something that you have a couple of different options in terms of how you conduct. So, as your association, something that you automatically have as, by virtue of being members of MASC, is you get technical assistance from us if it's, if you do a search that you choose to conduct on your own. That means that you have access to our, what we can post. It means that you have access to us as people who can continue to steer you correctly in terms of what meetings get posted and what kinds of information needs to be shared when. We have things like question banks, we have things like models in terms of postings, all of those kinds of things. We can help you come up with timelines and those sorts of things. So, much in the way that we hope that you think of us as always being on the other end of the phone, anyway, that's something that continues to be true if you continue to do a superintendent search. And a couple of you, I know, have my business card in your folder. Not all of you do because I'm actually running out of them. So, but I can certainly share that information with you and I know that you all have access to the, the association's phone pretty easily. The third option that you have, if you choose to do a search, is you can employ a search firm to do that. Now, one of the places that does that is MASC. We are not here to sell you anything tonight. That would be an ethical violation. It is something we can come back and talk to you about another time, if that's something that you're interested in. But both we and other organizations staff searches. Now, I always think, always think it's important for folks to understand that that doesn't change who makes the decisions. So, the school committee is, is always the ultimate arbiter when it comes to the decision-making process for the superintendent. The selection is yours, final interviews are yours, all of that. And also, really, the steps in the process are yours. There's a number of big decisions that get made along the way that need to be done in public by the school committee, even if you have a staffed search. But generally, what that means is that you have somebody who is consulting for the search, who will help you gather information before you go to post. What is it that the district is looking for? What is it that the staff feels is particularly important? What do parents feel are important? How do you actually make sure that you're incorporating student voice in that? How do you then incorporate that into language that gives the people who are applying a good picture of what it is that you're looking for at this point for a superintendent? Generally speaking, the person who's doing the consulting work for you would be then gathering the applications and would be working with a search committee that would generally do a first round of interviews. Important thing to know, and this is actually one of the exceptions to the open meeting law that's allowed, is that a search committee actually can conduct their business in executive session, which means that by virtue of, and this, of course, is true also if you choose to do the search yourself, if you have a search committee. That first round, the applications are confidential and the first round of interviews and that first set of decisions also are confidential and are made in executive session. And the open meeting law itself actually spells out exactly why. One of the, one of the, it's, I think, the only exception that actually gives its own reason for existence in the law itself, which is that it gives you a better selection of candidates. People are more apt to apply for the superintendency if not everybody on earth knows that they're applying for the superintendency. And we would, I think, agree that that is absolutely the case, that you, if, occasionally we get the question of, well, what if we just sort of did it all in public? And the answer is that you will not get the same quality of candidates. That first round, done executive session, generally then, the, the search committee will announce to you who the finalists are and then it goes back to you all and then actually, again, is a public process. Usually, again, regardless of whether you're conducting the search yourself or you have a consultant do it for you, next step would be for some of you to visit the home districts and for the finalists to visit your district. And then, final step is public interviews with a decision that's made in public session. If you are staffed, what we would say is that you should make sure that you are staffed until the end, until you actually have a contract with whoever the incoming superintendent is. And that is pretty much what the processes are. So, I have talked a lot. I'd be interested in hearing whatever questions you might have.
Could you just speak a little louder?
Sure.
And maybe a little slower?
No, and I probably-
You pulled an awful lot of information.
It is an awful lot of information, absolutely. Yes. So, is there anything you want me to back up and go over again?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But I, I guess my question is, how much is the whole committee-
Yep.
-on the search?
Yep. So, if you choose to have a subset of the school committee on the search committee, right, so that preliminary screening committee, you need to make sure that it's less than a quorum. So, for you all, you could have no more than two. But you don't have to. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Or you could all be on the search committee and not have access to executive session. The Attorney General's rule is that the search committee can convene an executive session, but only with a minority of the school committee present. Otherwise, you can all be on the search committee, but you won't have the opportunity to be in executive session. And that would really compromise your ability to screen. But I personally would encourage two of you to serve on the search committee. The presence of the school committee on the search committee is very important to protect the interests of the school committee and to make sure that everything that happens in the search committee aligns with your priorities and the way you want to see the search run.
Through the chair.
Mr. Adam O'Malley.
So, Ms. Perengeli, I just did this as part of the town ministerial search a couple of months ago. I can say, and I'll know what occurs if we were to utilize your services as a consulting, but we, we had a consultant come in and it was very beneficial for a number of reasons. One, they were able to really walk us through the entire process, help us put together the posting that we did put online. But also, the vetting process was very important. They were able to identify individuals that apply for every position that comes up and they're not a real candidate, they just put their resumes in. They were able to identify candidates that may not be as known throughout the district, but were able to point about and say, this is someone that we know about, that's kind of up and coming and some that you should consider and take a look at. And that was really helpful, at least from my perspective, that we kind of got that information of what, I guess, is known in the industry that a lot of the people in the committee wouldn't know. So, and then ultimately, you know, once we went to the selectmen, went from the search committee to just being a consultant for the selectmen at that point, which I would assume would kind of be the situation here, to help-
Yes.
... with those rounds of interviews that occurred with the semifinalists. So, I don't know if it's a decision that we, as a committee, make, or I know we came back as a search committee and had to ask the selectmen for that, but I'm more interested in just seeing, is that what your services would be? Do you go out and actively recruit candidates to the position? Or does your, you know, services stop at putting it online and posting in the appropriate places?
So, we, we do a bit of recruiting in terms of, most Massachusetts superintendents come from Massachusetts. Not all of them. Occasionally, they come from contiguous states, sometimes they come from outside. And we are part of the National Association of Superintendent Searches, and so they go out over that. Part of what I would say is important, sort of from an MASC perspective, is because we're everywhere in the state, we tend to know that sort of up and coming, right? So, who's the assistant superintendent, who's just starting to apply? Because, as you know, we have relationships with, with sort of, not only the school committees, but the districts across the state. In many cases, you know, if, if it's somebody who's not from central Mass, I can call my, my colleagues from the other parts of the state and say, hey, so we've got an application of the assistant superintendent from so-and-so, have you actually seen them? Do you know anything about them? And also, yes, we not, not uncommonly will get people who are saying, you know, they might pull us aside when we're doing a presentation for their committee and say, hey, so I'm thinking of applying this coming year, if there's anything you think I would be appropriate for, can you let me know? And as you know, there's, you know, there's going to be a group of people who are perhaps more suited to Webster than they are to, you know, Metro West, or than they are to a large regional district, or those sorts of things. And some of that matching is something that we do. Yep.
I would just add that most people who are looking for superintendencies in Massachusetts, regardless of where they live, go to the websites of MASC and the Superintendents Association. We get about 85,000 hits a year on our website. The superintendents get close to a million hits a year, but they post all positions. So, if you look around the country, your vacancy is known, and it's widely known and would be widely known, but there are also some additional places to which we send information. And this information is available to you regardless of who you have using for your search. But they include the places that train superintendents, the Massachusetts Aspiring Superintendent's Program, the Influence 100 Program with the Department of Education, another initiative that they have trying to find candidates of color who may be interested in the superintendency, the Urban Superintendent Training Program, which we share information with and who we hear from periodically, because they're calling us and I'm calling them as well, to find out who the candidates are. I will tell you that many of the candidates coming from out of state find it difficult to want to make a transition. Some people want to come home-
Yes.
... to Massachusetts. But the difference now is that in almost every single case, you have an aspiring superintendent or a superintendent who wants to come, there's almost always another adult in the household. And if you live in Muncie, Indiana, and the other adult in the household is a physician or an attorney, a clinician of some kind, a professional with a practice, they just can't pick up and leave, show up in central Massachusetts and say, ah, here I am, I want to be a principal, where should I go? It doesn't work that way and it's not that easy. So, many candidates are concerned about not having a support network if they come from out of state. And several of the more recent out-of-state candidates haven't stayed longer than three years. Many of them are very good, but they just find they don't have the support network in Massachusetts to stay. They have access to your vacancies. They will know there's a position. And no one is more than two degrees of separation away from Webster, Massachusetts, in that if a superintendent in the Midwest wants to come to Massachusetts, that superintendent will call our counterparts at the Missouri School Boards Association, or they'll call Tom Scott's counterpart at the Massachusetts Association of Schools Superintendents, and they'll ask them, what's the job like? What's the community like? What's the board like? They will all be thrilled at school funding in Massachusetts. It's much better, much easier than most other states. They might have a hard time with real estate prices. And then they're going to want to know, you know, what's it like? And they'll also want to know if there's, if there's a strong internal candidate. If you have a strong internal candidate, everyone will know. And everyone will just know. And there are people who are reluctant to contest in that kind of a race because while it's no great shame to apply for the superintendency in Webster and become a finalist and not get the job, but it's no great honor either. And you don't want to be known as, oh, here's the person who didn't get hired in Webster. So, the superintendents can be, and candidates can be somewhat timid, but that's the job of the people that assist you, to make them confident and to help you. And as Tracy described, there is a large array of services that are available to you as a member district where we can help you if you choose to take more of a management role of your own search. And if you, and, and I think I listed them in the materials which I sent to you, but they can be pretty extensive. And you might want to take a look at what's involved and then think about whether you want somebody to help you with it. Many districts do, but some districts do not because they have a competent, a search proficient central office personnel group that can, can handle it. I don't mean that anyone would be incompetent, but there are certain skills that you need. You know, your superintendent is, is leaving, this is a nice place to be. Usually, if there's some political turmoil or a scandal or a crime going on, there, there are problems with searches. You're not looking at any of that. You're looking at just making a transition and helping the district continue to improve, which is what most superintendents are looking for.
So, I actually participated in the last search committee, and that's how I dipped my toe in the water, being a member of the school committee and whatnot. And MASC was instrumental in that search and really paved the way for us to have some really good candidates and helped shape that whole process from the beginning to the end. I found it to be very helpful. Can you walk us through a little bit about our timeline right now and recommended first steps? Whether, whether we enlist, you know, an organization such as yours or not, I imagine there's a good bit of table setting that we need to do to start?
Yeah. I mean, so some of what Glenn sent you ahead of time is, is really kind of the first set of decisions you need to make, right? Which is really that first call on, is there an obvious, we're just going to move to a point option? Because really, that's the first decision the school committee needs to make. Then the, if, if the answer to that is no, however you choose to handle that, right? That could be that you want us to come in and interview someone, you have a particular individual that you want to interview, those kinds of things. Setting that aside, if that isn't what you want to do, or don't have that as, as an obvious option, and are moving forward with a search. Really, then the next call is, are you going to do it yourself? Are you going to bring someone in to do it? And there's, you know, as Glenn mentioned, the list of technical services is something that, that we've shared with you, which is something that the association makes available if you choose to do it yourself. As, you know, several of you have had experiences with various searches that have had, had staffing involved, and I think that the, the town manager search sounds like a, a pretty solid parallel in terms of how it works for a superintendent search. You've actually already done an MASC search that was Dorothy. So, you know, that, that is the same. And in those cases, the first bit of thing that really then happens, once you've made that decision, is generally speaking, the person who is staffing the search will be coming in and gathering a lot of information. So, just to give you sort of my own experience, most recently, with this, with another search that I'm doing, I'm currently doing the Ware Superintendent Search. I spent several days in the district, met with all the teachers at faculty meetings, met with all the central administration staff, did a, both an in-person and a remote availability for community members and parents, met with a number of groups of students, basically tried to encompass as much of the community as I possibly could, met with their town manager, and put that information together for the school committee, both in a, a general report of, here are a number of themes that emerged, and also, here's a proposal as to what your job position should look like. And then effectively, I mean, what's a superintendent? A superintendent's responsibilities are the same regardless of the district? So, that part you don't really need to post, but the, what is it that where, that you need right now, right? So, what I did was I pulled together what was, what was it that the town of Ware and the Ware Public Schools were looking at right now? And really, the question that you would be asking is, what is the next step for the Webster Public Schools? What is it that you most need right now in leadership? Having that together, and that really is something that's up to you to decide. So, someone coming back to you with that report is, you know, that part of the position, but then for you as a committee to say, yes, this is, yes, this accurately describes what we feel is what we need for leadership for next steps. That then gets posted, you want to make sure that you've got a good bit of time in terms of gathering applications. Can, you, six weeks is good. I've done a month, it's not ideal, but it's possible. During that time usually is a good chance for the search committee to get trained. So, one thing that the association always does is we make sure that people understand their responsibilities under the open meeting law, under state confidentiality laws and ethics laws, and also just generally speaking, understand what their role is in the search. Then there's the, their review of the candidates, they're deciding who they wish to bring in for interviews, interviews in executive session. That's usually another couple of weeks, and then they'll be releasing that information to the school committee. Once it goes back into your hands, I would say that, that the sort of dance back and forth becomes about your availability, because the next thing that happens is visits to the home districts of the candidates. That's, sometimes there are school committee members who can do it, and sometimes there are school committee members who aren't available during the day. That's a good chance for you to take advantage of having different people who have different kinds of schedules. And that, so that you could, give yourselves another couple of weeks there, and then final interviews. So, in terms of timeline, am I remembering correctly that you're actually facing a March retirement? Yeah. So, I mean, you, you have time to do this at this point, is the, is the short answer. You probably, I, I, my sense is you'd want to get moving. And part of the reason I say that is because when we're doing a search that starts on this side of the winter break, we then have a week of Thanksgiving and two weeks of winter break, and we all know that schools aren't doing any work, doing anything during those. So, no one's visiting a school or any of those kinds of things during that time. Great.
Through the chair. So, assuming, I know, obviously, our superintendent's leaving March 3.
Mm-hmm.
Going through this entire process, hiring somebody, they would then have to give their home district time under whatever their contract dictates. Let's assume it's similar hours where it's 90 school days.
Mm-hmm.
If we hire somebody in February, that's going to push us to the end of the year, most likely. Is there a process of going about and getting an interim?
Mm-hmm.
Is that something you also assist with?
Yep.
Or is that something we have to handle by ourselves?
No, so there's two things. I will say that, yes, certainly that, and I'm glad that you raised the question of the 90 days. I also will say that I don't think I've ever ran into a school committee that actually has held a superintendent to that. You may have. Okay.
But you could easily find an interim superintendent-
Yes.
... who could take you to the end of the school year and who might even be able to take you through the summer-
Mm-hmm.
... if the incoming superintendent needed a transition period or longer time. Assistant superintendents, people below the rank of superintendent who often move to the superintendency, don't always have the need for that much official notice time for departure, but they do need some transition time. And we maintain a list of-
Glenn, I'm sorry, can you put your mic on?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just want to make-
We maintain, I'm sorry, we maintain a list of individuals who are interested in being interim superintendents. That list is, is available to you under any circumstances as a member district, and we can walk you through that. You can also post for an interim, and additional people who might have not, want to put their names forward, who might put their names forward under those circumstances, might also be available to you. A variation on that is that some districts find that there are interim candidates who are willing to take a chance that you might like them and retain them. So, some people who are willing to be interims are not retired. They're currently working in school districts aspiring to the superintendency and might say to you, you need somebody in March, how about giving me a, a 15-month interim contract and see if that works out? And if it's not working out, then you can move next October to begin a formal search to find another superintendent. Or that, we have, in the last two or three years, there are three people who actually did that under those circumstances, and with proper vetting initially, it did work out. And in that case, you save yourselves the time of going through a search process and you save yourself any expense that might be involved in doing so. But at the same time, that's just an option to an option, and all those options are available to you. So, if you do want to look for an interim superintendent to finish the year and take your time finishing your search, you can still cast a wide net for an interim superintendent, which is a different kind of net than you would for a permanent superintendent.
So, I just guess, what's, what's the process of hiring an interim superintendent? Is the start date the date that their current superintendent leaves? Do they start working with that individual to get some cohesiveness, understanding the district? Do we take application, like resumes and applications in just as a committee, or does that go through the formal search committee and then they come and give us the guidance?
The interim side is usually driven by the school committee itself, because most people seeking an interim superintendency are not worried about, they're already retired in most cases, so they're willing to take the risk. So, an interim superintendent is nothing more than a superintendent with a defined short contract. And by the way, an interim superintendent has all the power and authority of the superintendency. So, just because you've been hired for three months doesn't mean you have less authority than the permanent superintendent you hire. So, if you found an appropriate interim, you'd negotiate a contract that might- So, if you found an appropriate interim, you'd negotiate a contract that might begin anytime up to and after or before March 1st, and would end whenever you want to end it, by mutual agreement, or by three months' notice, or one month's notice, whatever it might be. What you can put in a superintendent's contract is totally up to you. And I would also add, when you find a superintendent who you want to hire, their first call is going to be to the Superintendent's Association, looking for the superintendent's model contract. And I would tell you, don't ever sign that. We have a model contract. Read ours first before you read theirs, because our model contract protects the rights of the school committee to meet when it feels necessary, to act when it feels necessary, and to exercise its right to meet with members of the community, or to speak to your constituents. Whereas the superintendent's model contract might bind you in terms of who you can talk to, or even when you can meet.
And just to sort of maybe complete the circle there, in terms of how you get an interim, you can choose to actually post the interim superintendency if you wish. You also could simply contact us and say, I know you keep a list, can you give us a couple of names for us to actually see? And you then can, you know, we can contact people and say, this is happening, are you interested in Webster looking at you? You can conduct an interview process and make your selection based on that. But it's really up to you, whether you want to actually go through a posting process, or whether you want to sort of pull from who we know is out there.
No matter what you do, if you want to do an interim superintendent search, we do those searches for our member districts without fee. Always for an interim superintendency.
Now, is there a process that we should be undertaking to determine if there are people within the district that are qualified and interested and want to be considered before we look outside, or is that something that we do at the same time?
There are districts who will do an initial internal posting to screen their interim candidates, and determine whether they'd like to make an internal promotion, or whether they'd proceed, whether they'd rather proceed to a full search, with or without the people who were initially seeking the internal position. In other words, if you've got somebody that's good, appropriate, and someone that you like, it's okay to make a promotion. In a district where you have the support of the community, and in a district that's absent crisis, absent trouble, absent all the bad things that can happen, and you're such a district, you have peace, you have a district that's working well, you don't have the community outraged at what's happening, generally, the school committees in those situations follow the leadership of the school committee, the communities follow the leadership of the school committee. And when, if you were to look at internal candidates and do an internal vetting, we can also assist you going through a fairly rigorous process of looking at those internal candidates as well. And I would say, one out of three districts that does that, uses that route, ends up making a promotion, and they live happily ever after. I know, I have done zero homework about, you know, whether there's anybody in this district, and I'm not suggesting that we have done any of it, and that we know something that everybody doesn't.
And truthfully, neither do I, but I don't want to leave any stone unturned, or not give someone an opportunity to put their hat in the ring, or feel like, you know, we're not interested in considering all viable.
I would encourage you to make sure that you are in constant contact with your community, because there are no greater rumor mills than school districts.
How do you advise we do that?
Well, I would just be, make sure that your school committee meetings include an update of what you're doing, so that everyone knows the search process is transparent. I joke about this, but it's true. You know, usually there's a rumor that, well, the search is bagged for an insider, or there's a rumor that the search is definitely bagged against an insider, and definitely for an outsider, and then it's usually a side rumor that Kelly Siddiqui has a mystery candidate in Maine who's already been promised the job. These things get started because they're school districts, and these rumors get started.
Well, nobody gossips like a school district, doesn't it? Yeah. But, I mean, this really is one to make sure that, you know, use whatever reach you have, right? So posting regular updates on the district website, if the district has social media, those kinds of things. As Glenn said, the places where you normally would have conversations about the business of the district, making sure that it's part of that.
It is not inappropriate for school committee members to have informal conversations with people about, just don't have them with each other. That would be deliberation outside of the forum, but, you know, many, many school committee chairs will have discussions with maybe ranking officials inside the district and say, you know, what do you think? If the position were open, would you be interested? And give you a sense of what people might be thinking. And the school committee members, a successful search will frequently benefit from the active involvement of school committee members, talking to the community, responding to phone calls, presenting potential candidates to whoever's recruiting your candidates for you. Some of you know people who know people as well as we do, and that can be very helpful. And it is not inappropriate to do so.
Through the chair. Since you guys really do this on a regular basis, what's the current market like for open superintendent positions? Is our districts getting a wide range of resumes? Is it a limited amount of resumes? Are there numerous openings that you're aware are coming on over the next three or four months? Just, I guess, what's the scope of how things currently are in Massachusetts, and what could we expect?
So, we keep seeing the same headlines that you all do, right, which is, you know, people are leaving the superintendency, people are leaving education. I would say that we haven't yet seen that. So we keep sort of internally checking with each other and bracing for, you know, somehow this is all going to, both halves will happen at the same time, right? We'll have a whole bunch of superintendents all decide to retire, and there won't be any candidates at the same time. And that hasn't happened so far. We haven't seen that. One thing we did see, the year where schools largely were offline, or online, and not in buildings, I should say, we did see fewer assistant superintendents moving into the ranks of superintendency. A lot of people sort of more stayed put that year. But I think that, at least overall so far, we're not seeing a falling off. We keep watching, but so far. In terms of what we see, this is the lighter half of the year in terms of openings. So, we, there certainly are superintendents that have already announced that they're retiring at the end of the school year, that we've got a number of searches that are in train, and also a couple of ones that have, you know, people who have moved to different kinds of jobs, and we're in the middle of filling, that the larger crunch of that will happen after winter break. So, I mean, I don't want to say that we know necessarily what the whole year is going to look like.
No, we, there are a number of superintendents who have kept their plans close to the vest, but I can tell you that there were a number of superintendents who did not want to desert their districts during COVID.
Yes.
And now that COVID has abated, now feel that this is the appropriate time for them. So we're starting to see those announcements. However, everywhere that we have been looking, you can expect that, whatever your pool of applicants will be, there'll probably be a half a dozen people who will apply that you might really want to be your superintendent. You know, you might get 15 to 20 applicants to be your superintendent, and some of them will be aspiring and not yet ready, some you might not be interested in, some might be focused in different directions. But you probably would find at least a half a dozen people that, and you might want to interview eight to 10 people as well, in terms of your pool, to see what's there. So, you're likely to end up with someone that you're going to like. If you don't, there's a plan B. And plan B is, then you go to the interim scenario, or you start your search over again. And if you have somebody helping you with your search, those people who are helping you should commit to staying with you until you have a signed contract with a permanent superintendent. That should be a condition of getting somebody to work with you.
It sounds like a lot of the table setting that I was asking about, with regard to determining candidate profile, the needs of the district, and the other stakeholders, that's something that would be covered by any entity that we enlist to help us with our search? And then we'll be presented with that information and digested and...
And then they're available to you as a member district. We have lots of candidate profiles from lots of districts. They tend not to vary a lot, but where they do vary is, some districts are looking for, maybe to build their, work their way out of a financial situation, some need to do some building renovation and construction, some need to get the state off their back with some regulatory things that need to happen. Some districts are struggling from one crisis or another that they might have had, and those special criteria will define what they want to look for. But most position goals will include excellence in communication, commitment to be visible in the community, understanding of how things work in Massachusetts, an understanding of the evaluation processes, as I say, various elements of communication. And now we're seeing almost everyone looking for someone who can speak to, address, and implement a master plan of equity and inclusion for the districts. And you'll see that almost everywhere. The descriptions, the community profile will be different from place to place, but, and then there are some districts that might take great pride in certain elements of what they have done over the years. Some districts, I mean, if you were Hudson, you might talk about 20 years of building upon ethical practice. Other districts build upon creating whole life skills, including physical fitness, mental fitness, social emotional well-being, collaboration. But it's not that hard to figure out the profile, and there are lots of models to look for. There are also lots of models of ways to survey your community, to see what the community is looking for, and what they'd like you to look for. We have had great success with online surveys. We have significantly greater people participating in online surveys than participate in live community meetings and focus groups. But it's very easy to set those up. You can set them up in a matter of minutes, you can distribute them to the community, you can get your data aggregated anytime you want, and you can analyze what the community is telling you very quickly for no cost. And we have lots of samples of surveys as well. Again, available to you as a member.
That sounds like something the committee should be putting out, or is that...
Yeah.
I mean, it depends on whether you decide to do the search yourself, or whether you do it as part of a consulting thing, because then frequently that information will be incorporated into the information that you might be getting from the focus groups too, right? Because you want to be sort of balancing the various voices.
Perfect.
So, yeah.
Great.
And we're at the other end of the phone. If you have any questions at any time, as you think about what to do with your process, you're in a very good position to move forward.
Through the chair, I just had a general question regarding this meeting. So was this meeting to hear about the process? Okay, are we determining anything at this meeting?
No, I think tonight's meeting is primarily to better understand what journey we're about to embark on, understand our options, and then I would expect that at our next meeting we'll deliberate on a plan forward, and perhaps vote to enlist a consulting firm to help us with our search at that point. Or not.
Okay. And what about the discussion regarding possibly an interim? Will that be at the next school committee meeting as well?
I mean, tonight is to determine where we go forward, so by all means, if you wanted to talk about that, is that...
No, I'm not sure that it requires a proposal tonight, if the purpose of tonight's meeting was just for information purposes.
I mean, I... You're a strong interim? We have the capacity.
Your mic is off.
Sorry. You know, start to kind of mull over what those options are. Who do you know in the district? Who are the administrators who might be an immediate successor? Is there a strong candidate or two? If not, if you're going to do a search, does the school committee have the capacity to do that yourself with technical assistance? Would you want to move forward with a consultant? And that way, when you're coming back together again to have that conversation, you know, each of you has that sort of, at least has done some thinking about it, given what each of you, I mean, to Glenn's point, in terms of, you all are in the best positions to judge, where are you as a school committee for this next step?
I didn't see your question.
And also, as Glenn said, if you go away and need to talk to one of us again, you know, call us tomorrow, call us over the weekend. Next week might not be great, just because it's the conference, but, but give us a call, and, you know, we can run through things again, or that sort of thing. That's absolutely part of this, too.
So, just to recap, my takeaway, and an opportunity for clarification here, it sounds like our timeline is somewhat in our favor, being at the beginning of the school year here. We'll need to identify if we have an internal successor, and whether or not we want to pursue that. And if not, we will be posting the job either as an interim or a long-term situation, and whether or not we would like to enlist a consulting firm to help us with that search. And then from there, you know, I took a lot of notes around, you know, collecting information, surveys, that type of thing. What should be our goal for beginning the interview process? Here we are, it's the end of October.
I mean, I think this kind of gets to the options that Glenn was noting, and sort of the constraints that Nick was also noting, right? Which is, are you getting yourself to a point where you could be interviewing a finalist who's actually going to have a start date that is early March? Or is this something where you're going to be more comfortable, and this may even be part of your conversation at your next meeting, where you as a committee are going to feel more comfortable if you're not trying to have that March start date, but instead are saying, let's give ourselves the full school year, or even through the summer, let's actually have a start date of, I mean, typical start dates are July 1. But that may also be part of the conversation that you want to have. I think that you can do a full search and have someone by March. I think that if you feel like you'd rather have the time and the space, that's a perfectly reasonable, you know, decision to be making, too. And as Glenn noted, interim, you know, finding, filling interim superintendencies is not nearly as much of an insurmountable task. Not that it's really an insurmountable task to find a new superintendent either, that's probably not the best word.
Not as daunting.
Not as daunting, not as much work.
Okay.
I just have one other question, sorry. What do you typically see in the search committee itself? How big is a normal search committee? Do you want a certain number of staff members on it, certain member of community members? Should there be someone from the selectmen on it, things like that? I just...
Smaller is faster. The larger the committee you have, the longer it can take to get through the process. But you want to, a sample school... But you want to, a sample school, a search committee might have a couple of parents from different levels, a couple of teachers from different levels, somebody representing the central office. Sometimes there's a representative from the municipal side, town manager, town clerk, member of the board of selectmen, the select persons. And then you might find you're getting the pressure from the community to add someone from your parent advisory councils. Possibly maybe the special education parent advisory council might get a seat. You might add a principal as well as a central office administrator. My personal preference is to have a real balance and not have the faculty outnumbering the community representatives. And school committee members are considered community representatives in my way of thinking, but you do want to have that balance and at least, not at least, two members of the school committee. Just to make sure that nobody on the search committee tries to exercise undue influence. When you get a room full of people, sometimes your alpha people decide to suggest to the beta people that their way of doing things is the only way. Sometimes people try to do some passive bullying in terms of getting things. One other phenomenon is that sometimes people do their own Google and don't necessarily know how to decipher accurate Google from bad Google. And then sometimes people tend to do this, tend to look at what's best for them and not what's best for the district. That's why the school committee needs to be represented and why you also want to have a healthy representation from the community as well as a fair representation from your faculty. 11 is not a bad size. 9 is better, 7 is ideal, but then you exclude a lot of people. But nothing is more annoying than getting the search committee together and wanting to select an interview and somebody says, well, I can't meet on Wednesday. And someone says, I'm not meeting on Saturdays. And someone says, I'm going away for two weeks in the middle of this process.
Which is why one of the decisions that, at least when I run a search, is that when you announce that you're having the search committee put together, you tell the people the dates ahead of time and tell them that they need to commit to the dates. The only two things I would add to what Glenn noted in terms of representation, having non-teaching staff representation. I've recently done searches that had a bus driver, had nutrition staff, I've had secretaries, a sort of another facet of the staff, but from outside the classroom. And also, we're more and more often seeing students on search committees. And that's another sort of healthy voice. And again, to Glenn's point of sort of what's the perspective of those who are most touched by education at the table.
Many districts invite the police chief, by the way. Or the police community liaison, student resource officer. They're very helpful on search committees.
But the other thing is, it's honestly ultimately up to you. So what are the seats? How are they filled? How many are there? Is a school committee decision.
Are the members of the search committee required to attend, to commit to attending all of the dates that we put out there? Is there a reason to disinclude someone?
It is a reason to disinclude someone, because if you haven't actually seen all of the semifinalists, you can't really be part of the final deliberation. Yes, which is again, one of those where you don't want to find out halfway through, right? Better to figure it out ahead of time.
Sure.
And even then, with the weather coming as it is and the flu bug hovering about, with all best intentions, people might in good faith agree to be everywhere and sometimes not always be able to be there. In which case, you just make an accommodation and say, look, if you missed that interview, please don't participate in discussions about the person that you didn't see. Or you might tape the interview and say you have to commit to watching it on video. We'd prefer that you be here, but if extraordinary circumstances prevail, you don't get disqualified.
Great ideas.
You have more flexibility than you might think. And there are very few rules about how this has to be done. And regardless of what you do, we can advise you on what those rules are and how to work with them.
Any other questions or comments from anyone?
Post that and then obviously we have to appoint the search committee, correct?
Depends. That's sort of how those seats are filled is also up to you. So you can individually do that. You also can do things like, say, to your principals, you need to decide among yourselves who's going to be the representative of the principals on the search committee. That those kinds of decisions can also be part of how you do that. One thing that a couple of us have been doing recently in terms of filling the parent seats and the teacher seats in some cases, is actually putting up a Google form and saying, okay, so we need to balance this, right? We're going to make sure that we have secondary and elementary representation. We also, you know, as Glenn mentioned, sometimes committees will say, we want to make sure that there's some representation of those who have special education experience. So let's have everybody who's interested, who could commit to the dates, put their name in. And then let's figure out an assortment of the seats. That's also something sometimes that the consultant will do. But that's up to you all. It's something to sort out in a public meeting as to, if these are your seats, how are each of those seats going to be filled?
So would you recommend, sorry?
No, go for it.
Would you recommend starting the process now, for example, if we were going to go forward getting a consultant, hire that consultant, have them start doing the data gathering, doing that while the search committee is being finalized and put together so that all that information is presented ultimately at the time that that committee is ready to go?
So that you actually have more, you have a bit, because the search committee doesn't actually start their work until the applications come in, as much as that always, I know, feels like an urgent question from the school committee perspective, you have a lot more leeway in terms of that, because, you know, however you want to gather information prior to the posting, you have all of the information gathering plus the posting time before the applications close, before the search committee does anything. So that whole phase can be happening and you can take some of that time to then also put the search committee together. So there is less of a rush on that. I will say that when I'm in a district and gathering information, one of the things I will make sure to mention as I'm, say, meeting with the faculty is I'll say, you know, and if, and those of you who are teachers, you should know the school committee is going to be looking for members of the search committee, you know, be looking in two weeks, they're going to be starting to look for names. If you're interested, make sure you're ready to apply. So that gives a little bit of a sort of a runway for people to be ready to look for that. Same thing with meeting with parents or with faculty, or sorry, with students and so forth.
Maybe a newspaper?
Sure, and I mean, and to what Glenn was saying in terms of really the rest of the information gathering too, using the full resources of the community to say, we have a community survey out, we're having a public, you know, a session for members of the public to weigh in. All of those kinds of things are good places to go. And again, to that same sort of making sure that, you know, the narrative is something that the school committee is on top of. Using all of that is useful for that too.
I have a question. Did we get any answer to, do we have judgment of who's on the search committee?
The answer is, it is, yes, yes. How you fill the search committee, sort of to almost back up a step, is up to you.
Not how, do we have a say in who is on it, period?
Yes.
Each person?
If you wish to, is why I'm giving you that answer. Because in some cases, school committees choose to fill it a different way.
I think with...
You can.
Without, because you could say, if we wanted a selectman, you could go to the board and say, nominate somebody, let them know who it is.
Exactly.
If you want teachers, you could say, if you go to the union, say, we need three spots.
Yes.
Give us the three names and...
Depending upon what your own rules and practices are. Some committees will vote on the makeup of the committee and then ask people to respond and then they will elect the search committee. Other districts where the chair appoints committees have said, point the committee, let us know and we'll move on. Some want to have more or less say in how the committee is structured. And that's totally up to you. There's no requirement other than a majority of the school committee cannot convene an executive session as part of a superintendent's search process.
But you had said it's good for the whole committee to be on it.
It's good for two members of the school committee to be on the search committee, the initial search committee.
Yes, but at one point you said everybody should be on.
Well, that's an option.
Right.
But then you can't convene an executive session.
Right.
And the size of your candidate pool will be smaller.
So the inability to convene an executive session means that all applicants for this position will be public? And that could be a big deterrent for people who are in a district and maybe are dipping their toe in the water but not sure where it will go?
If I'm the assistant superintendent in Mayberry and things are going very well there and everybody likes me and they suddenly find out that I'm interested in Webster, my relationship with my current district changes. Especially if I become a finalist and they think I'm ready to go because that's where I want to be and I don't get the job and I have to go back to Mayberry. So that's why candidates really want some element of privacy, at least through the first part of the process. I will admit to you, I wish we had the process that some other states have, which is that the school board or the school committee can do the whole thing in executive session. But, you know, when you were all on the outside looking in, you were saying, boy, I wish they'd just not ever go into executive session. And now that you're on the inside looking out, you see value in executive session and you might view it differently.
And to go to that point, I know, for example, when we did the town administrative search, once we were interviewing the semifinalists, everyone was just Googling these people to try to see what was going on in their district. And you got to see where they were finalists at, how long ago that was. You can see who's been shopping around. So I would assume losing the ability to go into executive session would really derail this because everyone's name's out there and people are not going to want that.
Actually, a little bit more than that. I don't know if, I know one of you, I don't know whether you're all educators or any of you have been educators, I know you were in a school district. Were you by any chance an administrator? Okay, well, if you've ever been a principal or a department head or a coach and you've ever suspended a kid from school or benched a player or counseled somebody out of the profession, there's a good chance that they're Googling you every once in a while to see where you are. And if they find out that the high school principal who suspended your kid during hockey season for whatever, they're going to Google your name every month. And if they find out you're a candidate for the superintendency in Webster, they're going to call the school committee and remind you that Satan brought this candidate to your town. There are candidates who are just followed by, I mean, if you are a superintendent and you proposed privatizing your custodians or your cafeteria people, the unions will have none of you. So people need some privacy in order to get into the field and at least get a fair shot with the school committee. These are real-life cases.
I can just say, he is correct that people will follow candidates and reach out.
Yes.
That is firsthand, that is true.
That's the curse.
And that's also a good role for the consultant, because then those emails come to us when people say, what are we supposed to do with this, right? So, yes.
Curse of social media is that people that we never wanted to see again can find us.
So based on my previous experience, I think there were two members of the school committee that were on the previous search committee, members of the community, members of faculty, selectmen, that type of thing. It worked well, you know, it was a big group. But there was a lot of different perspectives that really added value to the process. And I do know that it was conducted in an executive session, which I think really expanded the candidate pool.
The members of our staff, we all sometimes see things differently about how this should work. I'll just tell you, I always recommend that if the chair of the school committee is willing to do it, the chair should chair the search committee as well. I've had chairs threaten me if I ever say that in public. And others will say, okay. You just want to send a message to the search committee that we welcome you in the process. The school committee is driving the process. We just want you to know that we will value your advice. Let's have faith in each other.
What else? Any other questions or comments?
Thinking about the last time. But the final interviews were an open session, right? I'm just trying to clarify.
Once the search committee is done and submits a report to you, everything else is public.
Including those individuals, the finalists.
Just the finalists, correct.
And the rest of the process, because it only involves...
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry, yes.
Yes, but to your sort of ancillary point there, the names of everybody before that always stays confidential, that is never released, yes. Well, as I said, I'm just up the road, I'm at the other end of the phone. Please feel free to reach out if you have other questions that come across your mind as you're doing this.
I guess the only other question I could have is just on your consulting services. Is it a flat fee? Is it based upon a time? Is that something you guys can answer right now?
Yeah.
It's an interesting question. The flat fee is $10,500. There are districts that have appealed and asked for a lower fee because of financial conditions. So in those situations, we take that under consideration. That's why we offer a free technical assistance array of services as well. But you've been paying us dues for 75 years, so the fee is not a bargain basement fee. It's a lower fee because we do it for our members.
And the only thing that's added to that is expenses. But that's like travel and, you know, if someone needs to grab a meal between meetings, that's really all it is.
And just to clarify, that fee is from the beginning all the way to a signed contract with a long-term...
We don't see anything until a superintendent has signed a permanent contract. So if in the middle of the search, you decide, let's stop it and go with an interim, then we work with you on the interim. And when you're ready, we then start the formal final process over again. Or if you don't like the candidates and we have to start over again, we start over again. It's all, we don't see anything until you have a signed contract.
I mean, the only thing I will add to that is, and I think you probably know this, is from the perspective of MASC, I mean, you're our members regardless of what happens with your superintendent search. What we want actually is a sustaining relationship with you all and want you to actually have a fully functional government body, you know? So that's sort of where our angle on this is, is that it's in our interest for you to be functioning well and have a strong superintendent that you can work with. And that's really what we want you to end up, so.
Well, and just as somebody who, you know, is in workforce as a career, $10,500 for this level of candidate is not, it's actually very low. You know, considering the services that are provided. I always try to be a good steward of taxpayer dollars and would never want to spend unnecessary money on anything. But all things considered, the amount of time and effort that goes into a search like this, I think it's very reasonable. Thank you so much for coming out and for all of your support. It's much appreciated.
Glad to be here.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.[1781.33]